Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our January 31st meeting. I can't believe the month's almost over. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, it hardly seems possible that it's time for our UNCF campaign. It feels like it was just yesterday. But with that, I'm going to ask that, first of all, you're not Jerry, but that's okay. I do like you, Jessica. Jessica!
That's nice.
Yeah, well, we do. But Jessica, you want to kick this off a little bit? And then we'll ask Steve to come up.
So, thank you. We're excited that we are just a day away from our UNCF Workplace Giving Campaign. And so, you're right, we do have Stephen Miller here, who's going to actually kick off a brief presentation to get us really excited. And I have a few other remarks to share. So, actually, I'm going to ask Steve to join me. And really, on behalf of UNCF regionally, get us kicked off.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner Dodge, Lieberman, Rice, Michael Colbert, and other members of the Commission. We really, really first want to say thank you. Again, Montgomery County is our largest workplace campaign since I've been in the role as Area Development Director for, I think, the fourth consecutive year. So, we really, really appreciate that. And over the last 10 years, we raised almost $170,000 to support the United Negro College Fund. I think that deserves our own applause.
Yeah, it sure does.
So, again, Commissioner Lieberman, it's always time for UNCF. So, and we thank you for your support. So, we're just going to show a quick video here to kind of give you a nice...
For more than 75 years, UNCF, the United Negro College Fund, has worked to combat deep-rooted obstacles to higher educational access, achievement, and career success. Annually providing financial and educational support to our 37-member historically Black colleges and universities, and more than 50,000 students attending over 1,100 institutions across the United States. Your support as a workplace campaign donor is critical to our efforts. Employee donations like yours are the second-largest source of unrestricted dollars for our students, allowing us to provide funds for tuition, room and board, books, and life situations. Situations like natural disasters or adjusting to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic.
To UNCF, I would like to say thank you, and thank you for your donations. Because of you, I have the opportunity to achieve my dreams and say that I'm a physicist. And hopefully, later on, I'll be able to call myself Dr. Rosen.
This scholarship has enabled me, as a young woman, to continue with my studies at Xavier University. I am endlessly grateful for the scholarship that I have today.
So, whether you decide to help by giving once or often, know that your support truly makes a difference. Talented, deserving students come from all walks of life. One of life's great equalizers is that at some point, we all need help. And as we manage through these very turbulent times, remember that one of these promising students today may just be the next doctor, nurse, teacher, or technologist who changes your lives tomorrow. Please give what you can. UNCF, our students and our HBCUs appreciate you and your donation, no matter how big or small. You can be the difference. You can help change the life trajectory for someone. Thank you. And always remember that a mind is a terrible thing to waste.
Great, so that really says all that I can say. Again, we are so, so very thankful for your leadership, for your support, for the work that we do. But one of the most important things I want to share with everybody is that we provide scholarships for local minority students to attend any accredited two- or four-year college. That means St. Clair, UD, Wilberforce, Cincinnati, Central State, Harvard, Howard, Yale. We do not determine where the student goes. We also provide support for graduate school, medical school, law school. So, these funds are very important for students to attend. So, this just shows you a number of other programs and scholars that we have across the country. And of course, Montgomery County is our number-one workplace campaign. We thank you again, really, for some unique, ingenious ways to get folks engaged in their different departments. And we thank you for that. So, you know, Montgomery County has done an outstanding job of engaging county employees, county departments, and also other people in the community. So, we really appreciate this. Of course, it strengthens our community for support of our local historically Black colleges. We're very, very fortunate to have Central State and Wilberforce right here. So, you can see the dividends that are available to organizations like yours and many others. One of the most impactful opportunities that we believe that UNCF provides is workforce diversity. We provide support as a nonprofit, and we try to provide a business case solution, not as a charity, but as a business partner, to deliver college-educated minority students that can enter workforce, to create the workforce diversity that corporations are desperate for. How the campaign works, I don't really do anything but pass out the information. You've got a number of wonderful folks here that do an amazing job. Of course, Tom Kelly did a great job for us. Jared McGeez is now in a leadership role, doing a great job for us. This lovely young lady here is doing a great job. And also, I have to do a special thank you and shout-out to Linda White in Business Services. She's a super volunteer. She's an HBCU graduate. She's also, she was Miss Southern.
Yes.
She lets everybody know she was Miss Southern.
She sure does.
All right, so, believe me, I know.
We can see that.
So, we thank her for her efforts. So, again, we talked about the workplace opportunities. These are just some of the corporations that we're working with nationally. American Express, AT&amp;T, JP Morgan Chase. These are corporations that you all know. So, the work that they do, and they understand how important and impactful it is, is also exciting and important that you understand for Montgomery County and what it does for your community, your employees. We have a number of new materials that we'll be sharing with your coordinators this year. And we're just excited and ready and willing to do anything we can to continue this work. I'm Steve Miller. I'm the Local Area Development Director. And I just thank you, and God bless you all.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
So, Steve did a great job setting the stage for our upcoming campaign that kicks off tomorrow. And as he said, really, this is about investing in our youth and our young people for a better tomorrow. So, this launches our 11th year of UNCF Workplace Giving, which is tremendous. It also probably deserves a hand clap, right? We've been doing such a tremendous... So, we've, again, seen a trend of success. Before the pandemic, we were at a high of about 35,000, and even last year at 32,000. So, our goal again this year really is to exceed that 30,000 or more in giving through cash, check, credit card, and payroll deduction. But the key point is that all these funds that are raised go to our scholarship program, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a few minutes. But we have some things to get excited about. If you want to get in early, our Valentine's Day raffle. We have a Super Bowl raffle, and then Dines Donate on February the 10th. So, start to mark your calendars, get your dollars ready, because we have a few opportunities in just the next few days to get engaged in our raffles. Everything will be available on our campaign landing page, which is MCOOhio.org/UNCF. All of those events throughout the campaign will be kind of hosted there for that. And then, you heard Steve say, "We're number one," so that's kind of a theme. This year, we're launching an Uno tournament, right? And so, get excited, get your teams assembled. I think the deadline is this Friday, but we're looking to do some department head-to-head competitions on Uno. And so, the employees can win bragging rights, right? Who's the Uno champion? There can only be Uno champion. And there's also a trophy and gift card. So, get excited about that. This is our inaugural year of launching that. And then, we have our bringing back our silent auction in Moore. And this is a sneak peek at some of the things that are available to bid on. So, again, you know, look at your favorites. We'll launch the auction in Moore in the middle of the month, on February the 15th. And then, again, another new kind of twist for this year's campaign. For everyone that gives through payroll deduction, $5 or more, you get entered into a mega kind of raffle drawing. And that is a chance to win two nights at the Dayton Fairfield Inn, dinner for two at Coco's Bistro, and then two tickets to the Dayton Live Show, Ain't Too Proud to Beg. So, again, a great opportunity to support our local businesses and support UNCF. So, $5 for that per pay period or more is what gets you entered into that drawing. And then, the scholarship program. Again, this is the why behind why we're doing this Workplace Giving Campaign. It is the impact to our local students. And it is open to all high school students who are permanent residents of Montgomery County. And again, it's open to students of all race, ethnicity, and gender. So, it really is an open to a diverse pool of students that have a financial need for this scholarship. And they, as Steve mentioned, must be planning to attend any two-year or four-year accredited college or university. But again, it really runs the gamut, as he shared, where students are attending from. In our backyard, OU, NUC, to Howard, to Fisk, really, all across the country, our students are continuing their education and being prepared for success. How to go about that scholarship application? This will all be, again, on our UNCF landing page. But students, in order to be eligible, need to complete the free application for federal student aid or the FASFA, and then also complete the Montgomery County Scholars Application. It has some background information, as well as recommendation letters from their teachers or other mentors or supporters. Students must also have a minimum of a 2.5 GPA to be eligible, and then demonstrate a financial unmet need, an unmet financial need to be eligible. But more to come, they'll be, again, on our website. But I can't, if you say the best for last, you have a really excellent to hear from the students that have been recipients, in their words, how grateful they are for our really successful Workplace Giving Campaign, and how much they're looking forward to us having yet another successful campaign this year.
My name is Zoe A.K. I go to Fisk University, and I major in political science.
My name is Kavion Ogbutry. I go to the University of Louisville, studying sociology.
My name is Faith Chambers. I go to the University of Cincinnati, and my major is health sciences, pre-med.
My name is Chad White. I attend Ohio University, and I'm majoring in sports broadcasting.
I plan on coming back to Dayton, Ohio, and opening up my own nonprofit law firm for underprivileged minorities. I would love to come back to my hometown, Dayton, Ohio, and treat all of those within my community, open my own practice, and start my career here.
With my degree in sociology, I hope to make a difference in my community. I'm really grateful for the opportunity that Montgomery County employees gave me.
It really shows me how important it is to give back to those in the community. And it makes me really appreciative of people that work every day and work hard in order to give back to funds like these. And it also makes me look forward to the future so that I can give back to my community as well.
I'm just grateful to see that people are investing in my success. This really helps a lot.
Thank you to all the Montgomery County employees and county commissioners for their support and donations toward the scholarship fund.
I'd like to thank the Montgomery County employees for giving me this UNCF scholarship. Thank you for investing in me, seeing the potential in me, and this will help me in my upcoming years of college.
Thank you so much, Montgomery County employees, for supporting me and allowing me to achieve my dreams of becoming a physician. Thank you, Montgomery County employees, for this UNCF scholarship. I greatly appreciate it, and thank you for just seeing my potential. And I will continue to pursue my dreams. Thank you.
We always love seeing that every year, because a couple of those faces are familiar. Chad White was one of our young men that went through our mentorship program, and he was a basketball star at CJ, so he looks very familiar. I didn't... Zoe? Yeah, yeah, that's right, that's right. So, there are a couple of familiar faces.
Yeah.
You know, it's so nice to see our kids from Montgomery County, you know, getting assistance from our employees. So, we do have to thank everybody for that. And we're looking forward to some fun, new ways to raise some money. You guys always keep it going and keep it fun.
We do our best, yeah. And just thank you to the coordinators. A few of them are in the audience, but they really, the lifeblood of the campaign. They are the ones that get their teams excited about how to really continue the successful campaign. So, we thank them as well.
Well, Steve, you brought up a good point. When we see our young people coming back and interning and working with the county, you know, like Zoe, it lets us know that we're doing the right thing. So, thank you. Thanks, Steve, and thanks, Jessica.
Thank you, Ms. ... God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it starts tomorrow. You signed up for that Uno tournament. You are? Of course you are. All right. Once again, our engineer doesn't have anything for us.
But he just likes to come.
I know he does.
Be with us, thank you.
We're happy that he comes. Next, Domestic Relations Court.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the Domestic Relations Court, we have Resolution 130, authorizing a facility rental agreement with St. Clair Community College in an amount not to exceed $3,462.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. General Court.
Thank you, Commissioners. Afternoon. On behalf of Helen Wallace, administrative judge, we have one item for your consideration, 23-0131. It's authorized an agreement with 115 Recovery for two staff members and to implement and manage the Pathways Community Hub program for the Family Treatment Court programming in an amount not to exceed $133,920.40 through September 29th, 2023.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That looks like that'll be a great program. County Administrator, Michael.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Administrator and the Clerk's Office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on January 24th, 2023. Resolution 132, approval of bills. And Resolution 133, approval of travel and expenses. Both of those lists are available in the Clerk's Office.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Administrator Services, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Administrative Services, Resolution 134, approval of personal actions. List available in the Clerk's Office. Resolution 135, apply for the Granite Ohio Emergency Management Agency for funds made available... I'm sorry, funds made available under Fiscal Year 2023 Ohio EPA State Emergency Response Commission Chemical Emergency Planning and Community Right-to-Know Fund in an amount of $70,000. 136, authorized purchase from GEO Buyers Sun Holding LLC, doing business as buyers Ford, for two 2023 Ford Police Interceptors for the Coroner's Office in an amount not to exceed $89,388. The next three authorized agreements. First one is 137, American Structure Point Inc. for the Elevated Walkways and Surfaces Assessment for the Risk Safety and Emergency Management Department, in an amount not to exceed $150,000 through August 31st, 2023. 138 is Insight Sewer Lining LLC for cure-and-place pipe lining services for the Environmental Services Department, in an amount not to exceed $11,627.85 through July 7th, 2023. 139, RDA Group Architects for Critical Needs Assessment for the New Hope Villa, in an amount not to exceed $12,000 through December 31st, 2024. And one late item. Under Administrative Services, 147, authorized purchase of electrical vehicle chargers and equipment installation support from EV United LLC, in an amount not to exceed $43,949.
And where are we going to put those?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I can't answer that question.
Oh, no, that's true.
Commissioner?
I'm sorry.
So, we're looking at Trotwood now, but we're doing an evaluation, a broader evaluation, of all of our facility parking spaces.
Okay.
So...
Is this just now for the court?
Yes.
Okay. But that's great.
Pretty darn exciting.
It's a start, isn't it? All right.
Yes, it is. I definitely approve that motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you know, I just sometimes can't get over how government names things. So, listen to the name of this fund. The Ohio EPA State Emergency Response Commission Chemical Emergency Planning and Community Right-to-Know Fund. How about that? That might be the longest name of a fund I've ever seen.
I agree, Commissioner. I brought that up first, as rated.
Well, I... I hope we get it.
Hopefully, we get the grant.
Okay. Environmental Services, Matt.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Have four resolutions today. First is Resolution 140, authorize an agreement with CG Construction and Utilities, Inc. for construction of the Regent Water Main Replacement Project at their lowest and best bid of $2,229,860 through February 28th, 2025. Resolution 141, approve the planned specifications and estimated cost of $738,800 in solicit bids for the construction of sanitary sewer facilities for the Stop-8 Lift Station and Force Main Replacement Project. Resolution 142, solicit request for qualifications for consultant services for the Palm Drive Stormwater Lift Station Project. And the last one, Resolution 143, accept an easement deed and authorize an agreement for payment, for a payment of $1 to the Board of Trustees of Harrison Township for sewer lines in connection with the Stop-8 Lift Station and Force Main Replacement Project and record the same.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thanks for helping out Harrison Township's budget. Human Services, Jessica.
Good afternoon. We have two resolutions. Resolution 144, authorizing an agreement with Destiny Family Services LLC for substitute care services through March 31st, 2024. Resolution 145, authorizing a memorandum of understanding between Montgomery County Adult Protective Services and mandated participating agencies to develop a county plan of cooperation, to develop procedures for integrating and coordinating services and sharing information in the interest of providing adult protective services through December 31st, 2024.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business Services, back to you, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioner. Under Business Services, I only have one resolution for you today. Resolution 0146, authorize an agreement with West Care Ohio to provide job-oriented and basic skill workshop for employable adults in an amount not to... I'm sorry, an amount of $20,000 through December 31st, 2023, with an option to extend.
Move to approve.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Feaster. You want to come on up? And you have three minutes. Good to see you.
I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Willie Feaster, no address. I would just like to talk about the Memphis police killing that man the other day. And the most hurting part of Ms. Debbie Lemon is the mother. She first seen the tape before the public did. And the hurting part of that tape is when she heard her son holler, "Mama, mother." You know, to me, when he hollered that, that was saying something. You know, that mama, out of all that, seeing her son get beat, that would hunt her for life. It's no counselor, no therapist, no doctor, nothing can take that pain from her, the hurt. Because every day, that's all she gonna hear is that. She won't think about the beating. How, Ms. Lemon, can she get through that? It's only, only by the grace of God. We can't, human beings, we don't, we can't deal with that type of grief. Only God can take that woman through that. What made them police officers do that, man? It's sad, man. That was sad. No time in prison can satisfy that. It's nothing. Everybody suffered from that. They got loved ones. No one. That's a horrible, horrible, horrible situation to be in. You hear me? That is horrible. How, as law enforcement, can you lose your way like that? You train. How can you lose your way? Where was the accountability at? You got to have a supervisor. What was they at? What was the sergeants, the lieutenants, the captains, the major? Somebody had to... Should have been in place to stop that type of abuse. But my heart goes out to the mama, man, because that poor Black woman is gonna suffer to the day she die. Because every day she break up, every day she breathe, all she gonna hear is her son holler, "Mama." And what made him holler that? He feel death. He was, he was at the brink of death. He was calling out to his mama. He knew he might not never see her again. They was gonna kill him. And she gonna hear that. She gonna hear that forever. If she live to be 90, that's what she gonna hear when she get up, go to bed, ride in her car.
You know, Mr. Feaster, you expressed what so many of us are feeling about what happened. And, you know, all we can do is pray that she's okay, right? I mean, to hear her interviews in the last few days, amazing. You know, I know I couldn't do what she'd been doing. And to say that, you know, if things can change because of his death, she is something else. But you're right, I cannot imagine the pain. And so, thanks for sharing that with us. It's something that's, I know, been on a lot of people's hearts and minds. And, you know, we just have to do better as a country, as a nation. And because it's not, it's not okay. Nothing about it was okay. And as his mother said, you know, those officers are gonna, they're gonna suffer the rest of their lives. And so are their families. So... Thank you. Okay, County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'd like to give a word, a shout-out, and thank you for our IT department today. Anthony's over there. In the last few years, if you think about it, Commissioners, since we really incorporated our own BCCIT, they have done multiple projects across the county. The New Emergency Operations Center, the EOC in West Town, the fifth-floor renovations in the Rybo Building, the support now for our County Administration Building. And all of the technology, and they're always behind the scenes or helping us with our desktop or something's not working. And several people have made comments to me about our customer service and how prompt and how good a job that you all do. So, you've been responsible to our team, to their issues. And it's been great planning new systems with our departments. And I just want to say thank you and how much we appreciate the work. Our director, Uchenna Youngblood, and her leadership, and her entire team. The technology that you bring to allow us to do work every day has been incredibly useful to help us do our job. So, thanks, Anthony, and thanks to the entire team.
And Anthony, from the Lieberman offices, we know how you are there. You know, as we train new people and, you know, experience different things that they've never done before, he's always right there. Soon as we call him, he's there. So, thank you.
Everything doesn't always have to work, Anthony.
Yeah. But he, but, yeah. He's like, I think they were teasing yesterday, like, it's like we have a bat phone for our office to Anthony. But thank you. Thanks for your patience. And you just, you know, send Uchenna our best, and thanks. Thank you. So, last week, our Solid Waste District announced the winners of more than $300,000 in recycling incentive grants. And that, that's really big. And we enjoy hearing about that every year, where our cities and our townships throughout the county benefit from those grants. And so do school districts. So, this last year, or this year, we have three area schools, and the food bank that are going to benefit as well. The funding covers things like educational programming and promotes sustainability, graffiti prevention cameras. It's a shame that we have to have those, but we do. Recycling receptacles, new park benches that are made of recyclable plastics, a water bottle refill station, composting equipment, and so much more. So, this year, the grants benefited Germantown, Brookville, Englewood, Dayton, Centerville, Vandelia, Jefferson Township, and Washington Township. And we do this every year. And I know the three of us are very excited that we invest in a greener future. And it's, you know, for all Montgomery County residents, and it is a very impactful program. Matt and team, thank you so much, and congratulations to all of our winners.
Well, I hate to bring this up, but today is the final day to purchase your dog license from Commissioner Lieberman.
I did mine. I did mine at midnight last night online.
I have not done mine yet. You have to do it today. I'll be down there. Anybody else want to go with me?
I thought about waiting, but I thought I better, in case we forget.
Anyway, so, you gotta do it today, because otherwise, by tomorrow, it doubles. So, if you need to know... So, if you need to know where to go, there's 20 outposts, so look up McOhio.org/dogs. So, today's the day, $20.
And it is very simple to do it online. I did, it is. I can help you. I'll help you later on.
Anthony, come on, I can help.
No, I did it on my phone. I did all three of mine on the phone. Yeah, it's easy, Judy. You have until midnight tonight, so.
No, I'm here.
Go downstairs, yeah. Yep.
Very good. I just wanted to remind everyone, last Thursday morning, we did the point in time count, and it was done across the nation. It had to be, had been delayed by a day, which I think is only the second time that's ever happened. And because we did, you know, if you recall, we were anticipating a lot of snow, and we did get snow, but thankfully, not as much as we anticipated. And I, you and I were at the House of Bread later in the morning, but the teams went out at 3:30 in the morning, and they've been doing this for years, so they know how to go about it. And the point of it is to identify how many people are homeless on that night across the nation, so that, and try, if possible, to interview people to get a sense of some of the reasons why they are homeless, if they're willing to participate, and at least observe, and compare that from year to year, to see if things are getting better, worse, if, you know, people are moving to different areas and what the different experiences are across the nation. So, we don't obviously have any results yet from that, and I don't know, I'm sure they'll come back when the time is right. But I know that, for me, I never participated in any way. We did not interview at 3:30 in the morning, but we went to the House of Bread, and there was quite a crowd there through the time that we were there. And I was in the family and children's room, which is a much smaller crowd, and then there were other colleagues who were interviewing people in the main room. And I just have to, you know, whenever we do these kind of things, it's, it really is a humbling experience, and most of the individuals that I interviewed were not homeless, but they each had a story related to that, of how they're just, you know, one step away from homelessness. And I think that experiences like that really inform the work we do and make it real, at least for me, that it's not numbers and statistics, it's real people, real family, real children. And it really breaks my heart to see little children, so tiny, and their parents so bravely trying to protect them from the elements. And just, we all know that shelter is one of those basic items of survival and stability. And it's just a big reminder, at least to me personally, of the importance of the work that we do, and unfortunately, how much more work we have to do, because it appears there's far, far too many people here in our community in that circumstance. So, Jessica, thank you to you and your whole team. I just think you all are just inspirational by the work that you've done. You've dedicated years to this, and I know that we do better than other communities, but we still can do better, and we're, I know, committed to doing that. So, an impactful experience for me, and so honored to be part of it. Probably will try to do it every chance I can in the coming years. So, just want to share that with everyone. None of us take what we have for granted, because there's fellow citizens out there really braving the storms and all kinds of storms, not just weather. Thanks.
Carolyn, thanks for doing that. And, you know, as you were talking, I was thinking back over the last 20 years it's been since we had our first Homeless Solutions Task Force. And Deb Feldman led that, along with many others, and we haven't eliminated homelessness totally, but we sure have come a long way. And, you know, the work that you do, Jessica, the work that all of our partners do in this collective impact work is really what it is. And, but still, to see people that are homeless, are hungry, but to know that our community, and not just the government, but all the different groups that really work together. And being at House of Bread, for any of you that can, I highly recommend volunteering there to feed. It's, Carolyn said, humbling experience, but it's also, in so many ways, uplifting, especially for the work that we do, to know that we're changing people's lives. You know, House of Bread, Melody, it just does amazing work, you know? For anybody that doesn't know about the House of Bread, every single day from 11 to 2, people can go there and eat, and...
365 days a year.
365 days a year, get warm. But also, as, as people were coming in, Melody, because she knows people, you know, I, I was just listening to her talk to different people, and one of the questions she asked those that she knows pretty well, she said, "Where'd you sleep last night?" And, of course, this was a pretty cool day last Thursday, and, and a couple of the guy, you know, one guy was like, "I stayed in an abandoned house." And then another, I mean, he had the biggest smile on his face, and Carolyn had already gone into the family and children into that room to do the count, but this, this, this man, he got the biggest smile on his face to Melody, and he dug down into his jacket and he pulled out a key. He goes, "Melody, I got a key." And he's got his own place now. So, that just, it gave me chills. Robert was there with me, and I was like, "Did you just hear that?" I mean, it, so, we can't give up. We know that the pandemic didn't make numbers better, and I hope that when the numbers do come out in March, that we, we haven't grown too much. We know we are, and we can also, I just want to put in a word about St. Vincent's and our two shelters. They need, they need blankets. They put a request out for blankets and other things that, because we've seen a record number of people, so it's, it's very concerning. But for the work, Carolyn, thank you, Jessica, for the work that you and the whole team do. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right. I guess that's it. We do have a meeting next Tuesday, February the 7th.
Can't believe it. It's February.
Right here at 1:30.
I move to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great week.